I'd like to apologize for our late start this evening. We're finishing up some things in executive session, but we're glad that you're here. I need a motion to reconvene open session. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Scharsky. All in favor of reconvening? Okay, very good. So, let's all stand and say we pledge allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't believe we have any special recognitions at this time. Yes? Next one, do you will? Okay, good. And as far as visitors, did we have anyone sign up? Okay. But we do have Larry Wells, who is going to address us. I'll ask you to come forward and you may sit at this little desk.
Thank you.
Yeah? Really?
Yeah, we always sit in the back and make it big.
Yeah, you get all this space.
You got what you want.
Okay, so you will be given five minutes this evening to address the board and I'll kind of wave at you when that.
I will talk. I won't talk too bad. I only brought nine of these and there wasn't enough. So, I'm sorry. Thank you for allowing me to talk to you guys. I've got two proposals. I just wasn't sure how to present these, so I thought I would just present the Board of Education. The first proposal has to do with naming a cross-country route. And I'll simply read what this is here. As I recommended, the R3 district named a cross-country route for ex-coach athletic director Frank Schultz. The district has named a number of places, events after former staff, all of which are worthy and deserving. The David Kingson Nature Trail, the Bill Henderson Press Box in the football stadium, the Joe McCray's Track Meet, the Gene Steighhorst Gymnasium, and the Gene Steighhorst Basketball Campus. Frank was the first cross-country coach of this high school beginning in 1970. He created and literally mowed the first cross-country route on the grounds of what's now the City Club and was then to Porsche grounds then. And one of his first prologies was a state qualifier in 1973. Only after his wife became an HHS coach from Crystal City to Hillsborough, Bodavol, did they have a child and he decided he would give it his coaching job so she could be head Bodavol coach. So, in making a choice, he stepped down. In the early 1990s, Mr. Schultz became a faithful, long-serving director of athletics for the high school. He served this great skilled organization. Golf, soccer, and wrestling became HHS interscholastic sports while he was the athletic director. He quickly became the district's first certified athletic administrator. He also held offices at state and national levels in both the Missouri Interscholastic Activities Administrative Association and the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. I should have just given it acronym. And Mr. Schultz continues to be involved as he certifies athletic administrators and teaches an athletic administrators class for even which college really seek to become certified. He also continues to officiate track meets not just locally and regionally, but globally across the country. I believe if there ever was a dedicated employee who deserved laxing and concrete recognition, Mr. Schultz deserves that honor. Having served for over 40 years for the R3 students and patrons, and he's still serving as a bus driver, he's driving the bus tonight, I think I saw him. Patrons, the district should endow the cross-country track with his name and create a sign signified in it. That's my proposal. I know you guys couldn't act on that kind of thing, but I'm presenting it to you. The other thing I wanted to present to you is a quick proposal for a Hall of Fame. Hillsborough is one of the few districts around here that doesn't have a Hall of Fame to honor graduates and spotlight higher achieving alumni. At the end of this proposal are links to many familiar school districts and their halls of fame. The closest, DeSoto, Festus, Duncan, Crystal City proudly honor their top graduates. If the district decide that creating a district hall of fame would be an appropriate goal, many decisions force are needed. And some ideas prompted by the proposal would be creating a diversified committee to investigate, create a set of bylaws, and then of course establish in the bylaws criteria for selection, nomination form, composition of annual selection committee, and announcement procedure, honoring ceremonies. A lot of schools have dinners for that kind of thing. And then of course a display for that. Now, Beth has an electronic copy of this. All these blue things on here are links. So, if she wants this, she'll say, okay, send it your email to send this to. And you can click on that link and you can see what other schools have done over the years. It's pretty impressive. I really don't think you gotta reinvent the wheel, but as I say, because Herkenland and Festus and DeSoto have really pretty good ideas, I believe. So, that's a proposal. I'm putting it out to you and of course, as you know, you may do as you wish. And I appreciate you listening to me. And so, any questions? Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good night. I'll be right back. I'm gonna watch the clock.
Okay. At the high school, before graduation, there is a Hall of Fame, correct?
A Wall of Fame.
Wall of Fame.
That's for students.
For students, current students then.
And we do have some recognitions here and there, so we don't have an actual Hall of
Those topics I'm sure will be things that we discuss for the future weeks. Okay, well, let's move on then. This takes us to the consent agenda, our items. We had several items that you were looking at. Were there any questions or comments about those before? Anything that needs to be pulled? I think we need to pull the minutes so that Renee and Eric can vote on the rest, because they were absent. They can pull them. Any other thoughts? Okay. So, I need a motion to approve items B through H. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Scharsky and Mrs. Petrie. Any other thoughts? Okay, all in favor of approving items B through H on the consent items, raise your hand, please. Are you voting yes?
I think that's all right. It was just a fluke in the form.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Okay. So, now that gets us to A, which was the approval of the board minutes from the last meeting on July 20th. Any questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes from July 20th, raise your hand. All opposed and extension. All right. That takes us down to our reports. Start with the superintendent's report.
All right. Normally I say that I'm gonna keep this short, but I'm not gonna be able to keep it too short this evening, but I will do my best. A couple of updates that I have, I want to share with you that was not listed in the agendas, or excuse me, the report that I sent home to you. First day attendance, just a brief little snapshot, if you want to jot some numbers down. We had a total of 3,368 students present for the first day of school. 3,368. In 2016-17, we had 3386. And in 1516, we had 3356. So, there were a lot more students enrolled that were here on first day and it could be because they moved over the summer or they haven't officially dropped yet, or several reasons, but we'll try to get you some more numbers as they become available. Thanks, Kate, for doing most of those local figures. Also, I want to talk to you about, one of the items listed on the report was Arc Images' update. We sat down, Ray and myself, and Arc Images had met with the building administrators and their collaborative teams, discussed their needs. They've gone back and since drawn some preliminary plans and they met with Ray and I and asked if we wanted them to come to the board. And Ray and I talked and said, no, we'd rather you go back to the building administrators and their teams, collaborate again, because some of the things that they wanted financially aren't gonna be feasible when you put it all together. So, we wanted them to go back and speak with them again. And then they're asking maybe for the second week of September, the board can have a special work session. And I'll have to maybe email you some tentative dates, because they have not given those to us yet, to discuss the meeting, lay out the plans, and kind of talk about where we are monetarily and basically what you can afford to build and make some initial decisions and have some discussions. So, that will be upcoming. Their meeting with the administrators on the 29th, so plan to hear from me maybe after Labor Day and we'll get some more information to you there. I noticed in Ray's report, as well as in mine, we talked about the EPA football field update. And I guess the longer the shorter it is. Ray and I have learned, I guess there's two sides to every pancake and the truth is somewhere in the middle. But in essence, the current contractor for EPA is not fulfilling the contracts that EPA deals should be filled in a way that EPA deals it should be filled. Does that make sense? The EPA wants it done a certain way, the contractors kind of go back and forth, but it's on, I think, 30 properties, Ray, that are currently in question. And we're working to get, all we need is asphalt fixed. And a company did come and put some asphalt in, but not enough. They didn't repair what they were supposed to repair. So, the EPA is kind of at odds with their current contractor. It's understanding sometime October-ish, EPA is looking to sever ties and move to a different contractor. So, Ray and I are kind of on the outside, listening to both sides. We just want the asphalt fixed, but we've been promised on April, excuse me, August the 7th, that it would get fixed and we would know something by August 15th, and we still haven't received a call. And I did reach out again today to try to get the official stance on, is the EPA going to fix it? I truly believe they are. I just don't know when they're going to. But we'll see how that works. So, I told you I'd update you and unfortunately, that's all the information I have I can give you right now. On another note, I appreciate Board President Lisa Welker calling me and telling me about an issue that maybe was on social media regarding a memorial tree and plaque that was planted behind the intermediate. And I want to kind of update all of you on that in case you saw that social media post. I believe, I can't remember the year, and I hate to guess the year, I want to say 91 or 2002.
92.
92, thank you. 92. A tree was planted as a memorial for a student that was killed, I believe, with his sister while in a car accident.
Sister.
Sister, I know, I know. His sister was driving, he was in the car with his sister. He was killed.
And mom and dad was driving.
Thank you.
And the family was in the car. He was killed, she was seriously injured.
Okay. Right. And so, what they've done is they planted a tree with a memorial. I believe the sister came back to visit the district and went to see the tree, and the standard is still there, but the plaque is gone. She was concerned about why the plaque was gone. And well, I've kind of, I've been talking with Lisa and Ray and in reading Board policy, it says clearly that the marker can be removed permanently after 10 years. It has a little quip at the end of that that says, "and offered to the nearest relative." We don't know where the plaque went. So, we, we don't know where the plaque went. I guess that's the easiest way to put that. And according to Board policy, it could be removed, but we don't know where it was removed to.
Moreno was elected, has a plan.
It's probably weather. I mean, the standard that's there is...
Is leaning.
Is leaning and it's very weathered. So, either somebody at recess, the weather, somebody going to a football game, some title over the last 15 years, it got misplaced or whatever. So, we are more than willing to replace it and have a rededication. That is not a problem. We'll be glad to do it. And we just need to know what it said on it and we'll be glad to take care of it.
So, and I think that maybe it was Mr. Moreno, it also had a former school retiree mention it to him.
I knew.
You did, thank you. I knew someone from high school. Thanks, Eddie, for, you were sweating back there. Thank you, Dr. Moreno. I knew, thank you, Dr. Moreno. I knew someone had received a conversation. So, we'll reach back out to that retiree if you can work with Scott.
I will.
And a word to the sister and let's try to...
The retiree had learned about it through another retiree, so she had no direct contact either, but I will let all those people know.
All right, we'll try to figure out what to do.
Scott got this under control.
Again, I'm not for sure, and this might be something we need to talk to Ray about, how many memorials do we still have on district grounds? Because the policy is very clear that planting trees and shrubs and perennials on school grounds, that if it's approved and it is placed, that the district can't absorb the cost of continual maintenance on that memorial. But again, after 10 years, if you want to remove it, that could have been dumped, but I think it should have gone back to the family. So, if we want to rededicate that and put another plaque out there, then that'd be one good thing we could do. So, if everyone's all right with that, that's how we'll proceed. Let's see, a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about before I close down. I knew it'd be short. Scroll down here to the bottom. Map testing, as you read in there from the Kansas City Star, you know, preliminary results are that students are scoring better. I believe in October is when we give the report, including our APR and how our students performed on state assessments, and we'll get you that information when it is available. And that's all that I have this evening.
Okay. So, that then gets us to our facilities and grounds with Director Beth.
Good evening, Mike.
Hi.
I'll be Mike Short too. All right. Just review what we've been doing. We did get the high school stage curtain all taken care of and the outrigging's been inspected as well. So, we have all of that all taken care of for the high school theater. From this point on, the rigging will be at least reevaluated and inspected at least every two years minimum. So, it is on schedule now. So, we'll keep up on that. June high, we're happy to say that we got a little bit of work done there. We got the front of the building painted, if you haven't seen it. It actually looked pretty nice. I think adding on to the allowing us to do the paving down Leon Law and Hawk Drive has been a blessing. Thank you very much for allowing us to do that. And I've heard a lot of good compliments on that, so appreciate you letting us do that as well. Want to take a shout out to Mr. Moreno and his staff. They come up with a brilliant idea last year, well, I guess this year in May, at school ended, was trying to redo a safety turn lane in for the student, because what happened was the students were stepping out in the oncoming traffic. So, they actually come up with the idea, we tried to put it together, and it sounds like hopefully it's working well for them. So, but we know the students are a lot safer now, so we appreciate that thought as well. Lot of painting got done this past summer, which we were happy to report. I don't know if you got an opportunity to see the primary. We've actually started on the front of it now, working on the columns and so forth. A lot more to go, of course, but our budget for painting sure will end it now. We always spend so much money. But we are gonna keep working on some areas. We started and we're gonna show you a few proposals here in a minute. So, things have changed at the high school. I think there were lots of colors we looked at a little bit. There are, still are colors that stay around, so we didn't change anything crazy. We're gonna show you a few things, so in case you want to see them. Playgrounds and so forth, we have went back and made sure, especially primaries were stuck to the standard that they are supposed to be for the height and levels and so forth. We've done all those. I did include a list of all the inspections that we do do on most of them. Only thing was left out was, of course, that we don't do the borrowers and some of those units except for every two years. So, when they pass that, we'll be at that. And work orders, we did pretty good. We did 93, that's the last month, completing through the, for our summer months, about 82% of what we started with. We're pretty happy with those. Kate, if I can get you to kind of pop that video on. We'll show you just a few pictures. It won't take too long, there's a whole lot of them, but we wanted to show you a few things we did get accomplished, but I think it was pretty cool. That's what it started with. Pretty nice looking, wasn't it? If you got the drive, it was even worse. That bump really meant bump, by the way. There, that looks better. This is the band room. They've been wanting to strip for years, so that's what it looked like it was starting with and that's what it finished with. So, that was what it has going on, what they appreciate. This is the locker room, the girls locker room, where it started painting where they had the blue on the bottom, white on the top, and we basically started painting it to gray on top, which I think gave you life. Just some hallways, there's your columns in the front of the primary. And there is what we did in that playground. I think that made a lot safer for the students. This is some around the bathrooms in the primary. We started painting with the blues, unlike we did in some of the high school things. Got a lot of compliments on there. I just heard that one in there, because we had some people retired this year. Ray appreciate their assistance they were here. Had some custodians, they had about 27 years of service for our district. So, the grant was Eddie and Lonnie and then Pat Carroll, which maybe somebody might know. A lot of years of experience with us and we appreciate what they did, so.
Great. Thanks for all your hard work.
All right, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Next up will be technology.
All right, good evening. Our focus during the past few weeks before school started was obviously making sure the classrooms were back up and the computers were all hooked back up. We've noticed that's kind of a little bit of an issue, because the custodians in order to clean the rooms are taking the computers apart, taking them out of the rooms, and then we're trying to go back and set them up. So, I've been talking to Ray about it and we're trying to work on something on the ones that are on tables to maybe work on getting some shelves for them, so that we don't have to take the computers out of the room and waste all that time getting them set back up. Because then the products aren't working, the document camera isn't working. We got all the Chromebooks set up at the elementary and the animated, so we've got that in pretty good shape. We did have a little bit of issue with that Avast again, that antivirus. Remember I told you before when we were rebooting the computers? Well, we had another issue this summer. Fortunately, it was before school started and we were able to catch it. And we are looking to get new antivirus software, because this one's out at the end of the year. It was free, reminders of what we're doing sometimes. Our active directory migration's pretty much on target. The users, they've all been logging in. So, now they've been logging in as, with Novell and Active Directory, and we'll definitely at some point dwindle off and get rid of the Novell login. Had a lot of training, I'm not gonna, because I think these were on there last time, but they were all completed now, so I didn't really want to bring them up. The only one I wanted to mention was Kim Tully had asked if we would do a Chromebook training, so that turned out really good. So, Ethan, Aaron Johnson, and I went over there and we did an explanation of all about the Chromebooks, how to use them, how to take care of them, and then how to use Google Classroom and a few Google Docs as well. And we had 136 work orders completed from August 1st to August 18th, but I didn't really count the summer ones in there. And the only other thing I wanted to bring your attention was on Friday, August 18th, we didn't have any internet until about 10:30, I believe it was. The night before, there was power that somebody had an accident on Hayden Road and it knocked out power, well, it hit our Lightspeed server. So, our Lightspeed server went down, which left us unfiltered. So, we shut off the internet until we could get a new one up in place. They worked with us all night long, pretty much on it, and first thing in the morning they finished up with it and got it back up by 10:30. Any questions? That was lovely. Thank you.
That was enough. All right, very good. Next report will be our financial report. This is Gage.
Up there to see the financial statement. We're off to a pretty good year. We're only one month in, so not a lot's happening, but our revenue is coming in good and our expenses are good. Not much prior year, one month doesn't give us a whole lot. We're doing good so far. As far as my department, we had training with the secretaries after the principals came back and they kind of got settled in. I think the first week of August, we had training with the secretaries, just a refresher for all of them, building secretaries to go over the processes. We didn't have any new this year, so it's kind of old hat for them, but they've been off, they've had a little vacation, so we're gonna refresh them on, you know, tips, tattoos, things like that. We worked with them on purchasing, like accounts payable process and our EPOs, payroll talk to them, insurance, as far as working with comp, things like that. John Caiman talked with them as well on AESOP and how to do some of those things, because of things are doing differently in the building this year. So, we had a good meeting that day and I think everything went well with that. The exciting thing is we got our assess valuation in and it looks really good. We're really excited about that. But literally the finalized after board devaluation came in the day that I did this report and the books run out. So, our personal property increased slightly to about 2.5%, but then the biggest jump was in real estate, which does not surprise me. If you look around when you're driving, there's a lot of building going on and things happening residentially. So, that grew about 8.5%. New construction numbers nearly doubled over last year, which same reason, everybody's building. And we saw that increase from reassessment. So, overall, about 7.3% increase for 2017. So, that should be really good when we go to set our tax rate. That should be very positive for the district. Beyond that, my auditors are coming in after Labor Day, so hopefully we can get them in and out pretty quick. They'll do some testing and some work in the field and they look at attendance and transportation records, mainly that's what they do this time around, and it's worth the finalizing all the numbers you have here. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Student advisors, I don't know if you guys have anything to say?
Besides, we did meet a couple of weeks ago outside of school in response to Mrs. Ochi's email. We talked about some ideas to incorporate some of the younger buildings into our whole process. And then some of that, we set some goals for ourselves this year, and that was about
All right. I believe that concludes all of our reports. Gets us to old business, our unfinished business.
Really?
And really old.
We can really do this.
And I just wanted to tell you what's gonna happen.
I do too, we all do.
I'm really excited.
We saw that and we kind of took...
We're not pulling it off the agenda.
Okay, good. So, it's your turn, Mr. Green.
Fantastic. I'm asking that you approve a two-night stay at Washington DC. In years past, we've done it for just one night. We go on a Thursday, we run you into the grounds, and then we go Friday, we run you back into the ground and then we're home. We had changed the time of year this last time we've gone. Normally, we went in May, but to get it out of the school year and not tax the resources of us being out of the building, we moved it to June. Unfortunately, found out that, I assume that this is the case, but after Memorial Day, the number of flights to Washington DC are significantly less and significantly later. So, when you're trying to crunch it into two days period, you start running time. So, we decided to try and make it a three-day trip. It only increased the cost to 200, by $200, so it's probably around $1,050 for kids and adults. And actually, three years ago, four years ago, when we went, that was the price for the two-day trip, almost identical price-wise. By being able to make it a three-day trip, we're gonna have going to the Holocaust Museum, Daniel's story, which is the kid's side of it, it's not the adult's side of it, and then also go to Mount Vernon.
I've been on that trip and I know how he runs you in the ground. You come back exhausted. But it's a memorable event and very educational. But it's, it's a memorable event and very educational and fun, so. I think it's a good idea that you go in June. That makes it nice. Second. Okay. So we have a motion, like, Ms. Oshie, and second, I think. Oh. We have to pull it from the table before we vote.
She has a list that's pulling from the table, including the gentleman who just pulled from the table, saying a motion pulled from the table, considered.
First, so we have to, this gets off the table. I resent my cell phone. I'm sorry. Okay. So we have to pull this, uh, cons up, this trip from the table first, so I need a motion to do then. Thank you, Rob. Second. What? I said, Rob.
Yes, that's my second.
And, okay, that. All in favor of pulling this from the table? Okay. Now we need a motion to approve the trip itself.
I make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of approving this trip? Very good.
Thank you.
Have fun. There you go. Souvenirs are always welcome.
I'll work on it.
Okay, so now we move into new business. The first item is to set a date for the tax hearing that we do every year, correct? We have to have the hearing, um, before October first, so what is, we, we have, okay, how about if I ask for a motion to approve the tax hearing on September twenty-eighth at six-thirty something? Second. Thank you. Any questions, concerns? Okay, all in favor of setting the date for September twenty-eighth? Okay? So that's when it's, it's open to the public?
Right. Yes, nine, six-thirty. Vote for the primary.
And.
Vote.
That's right. Alright. Um, transportation routes. We need to approve the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen bus routes as presented. My own move to. Thank you. Need a second. Thank you. Any questions about any of these routes? Or comments, concerns? Everything's going well after our first two days?
Yeah, we changed a couple of buddy buses. Hopefully, our buddy buses, we're gonna change it back to buddy buses so that we can sit around with the intermediate quicker. Other than that, they're one of the one.
Okay, good. Alright. So, all in favor of approving these bus routes for two thousand seventeen and eighteen? Okay, very good. Next, um, item is to approve the purchase of seventy-two Chromebooks for the high school. And we would be purchasing them from Firefly for thirteen thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars. Is that amount correct still?
That amount still good?
That's correct.
And that was budgeted in the high school budget for this school. Motion.
Okay, second, Rob, and then Petrie. Any other comments or questions after reading the recommendation? Alright. All in favor of approving the purchase of the seventy-two Chromebooks for thirteen thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars? Raise your hand. Very good. Enjoy your Chromebooks.
Science and social studies departments will greatly thank you.
That's good. We need them too. Alright. Moving on to foreign language. We need some materials that they are requesting, and in the amount of six thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-six cents, and that includes shipping and handling as well. So we're approving the adoption of these materials and resources for language, for language classes. We'll let Eric have his, uh, vibe over. When was the last time that materials were purchased for foreign language?
I couldn't. I wouldn't.
I don't know. Maybe ever. Okay, well, then it's definitely. Okay, any other questions? All in favor of approving these foreign language materials, raise your hand. Very good. Okay, item E. It's the idea local compliance plan for this school year that we need to approve so we can submit it to DESI. Thank you, Mrs. Parsky, and Mrs. Petrie, just a second. Do you need any clarification or any additional information about this? Everybody good? All in favor to approve the idea local compliance plan, raise your hand. Okay, we have two policies this evening, G C B A and G D B A that Dr. Isaacson is going to discuss with us first.
We wanted to bring these two policies up just to discuss and get, and I'm giving a clarification as to your perception and guidance regarding our salary schedules and both professional and classified staff in regards to how we look at salary schedule. Uh, if you can look on that sheet where I have it highlighted, where it says, "An employee may not advance more than one step vertically and one column horizontally per year on the salary schedule unless such movement is allowed by the rules adopted by the board and is uniformly applicable to that particular salary schedule or is otherwise approved by the board." Now, why does this become important? Is as we look at our salary schedules, the first line of that, as I interpreted it, and this was even going back several years, I think as I'd asked Julie when she was here, kind of like, how do people move? And basically, as you read that, it says, "A person can only go down one and over one." But the issue is twofold. Is number one, is we've had several teachers this year that have been going back to school and have taken sixteen hours. And our salary schedule's set up to, you know, Thatcher, Thatcher plus eight, moving only one step, they paid for eighteen hours. It's, we feel like they should be compensated for that. They paid for that, so they'd be able to move. And the same would apply to the classified. The other issue is, if you go down to our salary schedule, is we don't have that, very many of them, but there are, uh, some teachers who, when they get to step sixteen, I got a big head, um, maybe they don't get their master's degree that year, but they wait and they end up getting it in year twenty. Well, I think historically in the past, we went into SAS and they've said, "Well, they're frozen." And just because these are blackier doesn't mean they don't exist. Really, it's that forty-six, forty, you know, that number's all the way down. Just because they're getting, a teacher's getting paid that amount doesn't mean that they're essentially forfeiting that years of experience. So I think, and I don't know that we have any in the past, because typically, there's not a whole, a lot of teachers that get down this far, but they would apply that rule as maybe somebody got their masters, is they would only move them one step, one over, because it would only show step sixteen. And I think if somebody gets their masters, wherever year, their year is their year. Because conceivably, right now, that was occurring, is if Coach Cruz and I are both teaching together, he gets his masters in year ten. I hold off and get mine at year nineteen, but we end up saying, "Hey, you are froze, you can only go one." When we get down to the end, we both taught thirty years next to each other, but I'm on step, you know, four steps behind. And we have the same master's degree. The only difference is when you got it. And you're already giving up if you're, and then you're giving up that yearly difference salary right now, right? If we don't give them the years of service, it becomes a life, well, that's retirement and everything. It's a lifetime penalty. They're getting, each year that goes by, they're being penalized, I guess, or not earning what they could based on their years of experience. So basically, in simpleton terms, if they get their masters and they've never had it till this year, they, they could go down over to where there's, to match up with their appropriate step of the years that they did. So that goes to this policy, is our protocol is not to just move people willy-nilly, like, "Hey, you're gonna move." I think that's the spirit of the rule, that if you earn through years of experience or through your college career or college credits, you're able to move to the appropriate box.
And I, there's one more caveat. We've spent, Central office, John, Matt, Melissa and I have sat down and talked this through several times to make sure we're doing right for our people, because that's ultimately what a salary schedule is. And one thing that we left out was when we added columns for our, onto the salary schedule here recently, we had some teachers that were, that were on a frozen step, say sixteen, but they might have had twenty years of experience. And once you freed up the salary schedule, we moved them to twenty, because that's where they're, they are. So I guess our point is, we're just wanting to be clear how, what our belief is in enforcing this policy and make sure that it's aligned with the wishes of the board. Again, our philosophy is, if you're on step twenty and you get your masters and you jump over two columns, well, you earned your masters and you're on step twenty. That's where you're supposed to be.
So we need to adjust the policy.
Well, I, I don't know, because ultimately, I think what that is, is concluding, or what that's leading to is just a year of service. You get one year of service for one year of service, meaning no one's gonna move, jump two blocks in one year on years of service traditionally. But when you have an issue like this, enforcing the policy is, they're gonna be placed where they're supposed to be. Now, I don't know if that's a policy change more so than it is a.
Well, that's what this says. Unless such movement is allowed by the rules adopted by the board and uniformly applied.
So all are treated the same.
And that's why I brought it forth to here is, we're gonna talk about, we're gonna uniformly apply.
But if we go ahead and correct the language, then it never falls into question in the future.
And we need to really contact MSVA and see if this is their standard policy or if it's been one that's been adopted and changed by the boards over the years.
Because, I mean, everybody should be on the step, both horizontally and vertically, classified, certified, doesn't make any difference.
Right, that was the point from the fish.
Exactly.
One was the picture where it was.
And when I first read this, I thought, "Where in the world did that come from? That's ridiculous." Because if you earn it, you earn it.
And that's.
And so to me, it needs to be corrected.
Okay. Well, I, I'm sitting, sitting here thinking, good grief, how are you gonna verbalize all of that? And MSVA hopefully can, can do that if they're fine to come.
So we need to.
It can be positive.
An employee will be on horizontal. Instead of negative, I mean, this is negative.
No, I understand.
So, that's.
Right. Well, we just need to let MSVA take care of that first.
But for the purposes, payroll goes out tomorrow.
Right. If the board is okay with our procedure as we're, then we will move forward that way. And then we need to.
That would be, that would be good.
Is.
But it needs to be correct. Right.
We've applied that in the system. I just wanted to hear.
Make sure that we.
Communicate that, make sure you guys are particularly.
Okay. So overall, as a board, everybody good with that?
We did.
Okay. That works for me, for us. Alright, thank you, Dr. Isaacson. Okay, moving on to the last item on the agenda. Boy, doesn't that sound good for the seven fifty-five? Um, we have a new paraposition that we need to approve. We need to approve the funds for, oh, for two new para, it says two. I thought it was just one.
The one is just informing that we, we need to replace Cole Price. Because we had that position, but we said we're gonna try to say, it's just informing, we are, we need to.
We are filling that spot. So technically, then it is for two.
Yes.
Okay. So we need to approve the allocation of funds for two para.
Uh, Dr. I. We, did we already have the budget in place counting him for this coming school year?
Yes, we would've.
If we already have the budget in place, because he left in July, the money's already there, it has already been allocated to that position. We just felt we didn't need to fill it. So we're not going to need to vote to allocate for two positions, we're gonna vote for the one, but yet we still replaced the other that was budgeted previously. Correct?
Still down.
Semantics, but technically, the way this brings it, we created two new positions.
But since we, I thought we had established that we're still down one para at the primary, so wouldn't it be good to go ahead and approve of that?
I think the need right now is just for the one. Isn't that correct, Mr. Whitehead? The need right now is just for one para to be added, even though we are refilling Cole Price's position.
Refilling his position.
Right. That, that still puts us down one, even though we're refilling him and adding another.
After it's all said and done, yes.
Yeah. But right now, we're not saying we need that position filled. The, the final position.
Yeah. Did you try to, why are we saying we don't need it filled, though?
Alright, because the needs of the students that we have currently, according to what Matt and John have recommended, that position's not needed right now. Depending upon if another student moves in, we might have to come back to him and say, "Hey, we need this position now." But currently, since we switched around some aides, instructional aides last year, it freed up some positions. When Cole Price left, we didn't think we were gonna need this position filled, but due to the influx of special needs students, we need to fill this position back. But the board in July had already approved this position, you already allocated money to us.
So saying we're down one para at the primary is incorrect.
Saying we're down.
In spec, this is just spec.
We're down one from last year.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that it's.
The recommendation, she tells us to approve the allocation of funds for two para professional positions.
But I think what the recommendation should read, now that I'm looking at it, is you're gonna allocate the funds for one position.
Because the funds were already there.
Because it wasn't budgeted, but the funds were already budgeted for the other. So I think, I think they're just telling you they're going to fill two positions, one of them you didn't budget for.
That makes sense.
Okay, and that's what we talked about earlier.
Yes.
Okay.
So I made a motion to.
Allocate funds for one para professional.
A second.
Thank you. So just to be clear, funds were already there for one of them.
And making sure we're.
And we're allocating funds for one more.
Are you two listening to this? Are you two listening to this?
Uh, yeah, Miss Bo, here's, no, because I did misspeak. Uh, is the intermediate as the new additional.
Transfer.
Right. Transfer. This is for the intermediate and the primary. And so, if you kind of do explain this, district-wide is we have, went down three instructional aides at the primary, or absorbed them, and they are now in special education, okay? So out of the three that we absorbed that were instructional, we now need.
To hire one back.
One at the intermediate back and the one at the primary back. We're still down one district-wide from what we had since sixteen seventy.
But funds were not designated for those two positions.
For those two positions, the intermediate.
For the intermediate.
Intermediate and, and.
The primary.
So it is.
So it is two para.
It is a need to.
So we should leave this alone.
Correct. Because when we brought up Cole Price, my thought was, now, we fill that with, with another candidate. I'll change my motion to add a new.
Okay. To allocate funds for two para professional. These are spec. All second. These are not instructional.
Yeah, correct. These are spec. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So just so we're all on the same page, because we turned it five or six times. We are allocating funds to approve for two para professional positions.
Is this good?
Yes.
All right, we're good.
Okay. And that's what was originally recommended. Okay. So it just says two para professional positions.
Two positions.
Okay. Okay.
All we're saying is because we did not budget for those two positions.
So, I mean, so Kelly, are we gonna be good with that?
We will have to be good with it. We'll have to make it work.
So you're gonna have to find something somewhere.
Well, in place of.
In your pocket. Okay. Any other thoughts? As our heads are spinning. Okay, all in favor of approving the funds for two para professionals? All right. Motion carries. All right. So that gets us to adjourn or recess, I guess. Open session, and we'll move into executive session shortly. We'll take a 10-minute break, okay? And to the audience, thank you for attending. Okay, so I need a second. I don't, did we get it first? Beth did. Okay. I was, I was talking. I was looking at you. So we have a second?
Renee.
Oh, Eric did. I'm still talking. Talking around me. All right, all in favor to recess, open session. All right. We'll meet back in about 10 minutes or so.